So the next time you call me a boy, I'm gonna follow that and I'm gonna hit you.
Yeah, yeah, you ain't mad enough to stand up to me, baby.
Won't call me a boy again.
You've run this city in the ground.
I haven't run this city into the ground.
You've run this city in the ground.
You have run this city into the ground. He's been claiming that I fraudulently sold him properties for the past four years.
I almost ran over by a city council and nothing has been done about it yet. Not apologies, not anything. She threw up a middle finger. Said she didn't.
911, what's your emergency?
No! You gotta be there!
Apparently, the internet has been sleeping on these Tarrant City Council meetings.
As you just heard in the intro, one of the meetings would end with a council member punching the mayor in the face.
I now have a new city council meeting that I'm going to watch every single month. And that's a sentence I've never said before.
Make sure you watch their shenanigans all the way till the end. It culminates in a council member getting accused of trying to run over the pastor.
And with that, we're off to the races.
And you'll be winner.
He went on to talk to Bulger about what he's gonna do to my wife and then I hit him. The court, by the way, said not guilty, then any man that's had any reasonable guts about him at all would have hit him. So, thank you, court. Anyway.
So the next time you call me a boy, I'm gonna follow that and I'm gonna hit you.
Yeah, yeah, you ain't mad enough to stand up to me, baby.
Won't call me a boy again. Or better yet, why don't you call me [BLEEP], like you've been calling me?
Wow, here we go with the races again.
Come on.
We go again.
I'm gonna call our regularly scheduled meeting to order. I'm gonna ask Pastor Chris to lead us in a word of prayer.
Father, you say let brotherly love continue. Father, we ask that you would do this right now into Tarrant. Bring the family back together, Father. Father, we ask you, Father, that confusion will go right now in the name of Jesus. We ask you, Father, that bickering will go right now in the name of Jesus. Father, we don't need this in Tarrant no longer, Father. Father, we ask you, Father, that you would just rain down right now your spirit, Father, in Tarrant right now. But that would be peace among the people, Father. That love will continue from heart to heart. Let me bless you, asking our son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
The reason I'm here is just to clear up a point. I hear rumors against me saying that I don't garbage. I worked at the city hall with this city for more than ten years with the previous mayor. And it's reverse. I pick it up garbage together with Mr. Hart. We worked for fourteen years. That's what keep our street clean. Ms. Veronica, District One, he's creating these kind of rumors against me, and I don't like that.
I got the worst.
Because I...
Before you go, Father, can you just look at this and I'll show you why I thought it was you? No, look at this for me.
Oh, you're making me say it.
No, when I said that to him, I said it's a possibility I was wrong. I said I was willing to show. Did I not? Here's the tag, and if it's wrong, I apologize. Like I apologized then, and I personally apologize now. So that's the tag number, and I got the video. So that's one thing. I'm not too big to say that I was wrong. So when I say something, I'm gonna be able to prove it and be grown enough to admit it. So when I mention it, you know, did I not say that? I could be wrong.
But I don't say. Somebody told me.
No.
He, 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 Mr. Hart told me.
I know, but I'm saying when I said it to him, I was saying I was willing. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong. So here's the tag number. So I'm not too big to say I'm wrong.
I respect you. I respect you to be respected.
Yes, sir. I just want you to know.
Thank you very much. And I would be very happy the way I say I work, help her up. I continue helping. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone of you.
I just wanna apologize. So Ms. Torres actually came to my office and told me about it, and I told him I would give him time to actually address the council. And I just personally wanna apologize as on behalf of the city, as well as a person, because she's spread rumors about me too.
Well, you know what? The thing is, okay, like I apologize, you know what? This is not the day or the time for me to entertain that. So we'll just wait and deal with it in court, okay?
My suggestion is, don't say nothing because...
Yeah, I want to show you something.
I'm for you. I'm for you, but...
No, look, before you leave, I wanna show you the video that I said. I will show you. I'll show it to you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. It's fine. Everyone make mistakes.
Actually, my suggestion, don't, don't, don't...
No, I don't. I don't.
Be nice to everybody, and you'll be winner.
You know, my thing is, like I said before... Like I said before, I'm not too big to say that I make mistakes and I'm human. But the thing is, when I say something, I will be willing enough to show you why I said it and the proof. I oftentimes say, do you wanna see the proof, the documentation? No one has ever wanted to see it. But the reason why I'm saying again, here it is on my phone, and you're welcome to see it. So, you know, I'm not gonna entertain what the mayor is saying, because this is not the time or the place. The time and the place is coming very soon.
Chief Wendell Major is due to be removed from the office of the Chief of Police of the City of Tarrant for cause. Now it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Tarrant, Alabama, while in regular session on Wednesday, November the sixth, 2024, as follows. Section one, that the City Council of the City of Tarrant is hereby immediately removed for cause Wendell Major from the office of the Chief of Police for the City of Tarrant by a majority vote of those elected to the council. I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution as read. But being that the council refuses to act...
The mayor has been firing people from the Fire Department and the Police Department, and the City Council, well, they don't agree. They say that the mayor hasn't been cluing them in on these decisions. So they have been actively working against him, which is their right.
I'm going to respectfully ask that the clerk put this on the next agenda for me to bring up.
Mr. Mayor, in response to your allegation there that the council refuses to second your vote, first of all, you didn't, you did not properly ask for the second. You've been mayor here for four years now, and you still don't know how to do the proper language. But let me bring this airborne to you. I'm glad he's done this now. I'm glad he's done this now. He's had his say now for several, several months. Okay, Chief, Major.
Yes, sir.
Would you come here, please? The council voted to have an individual do research on the allegations against the chief. Chief, these allegations, were they presented to any law enforcement agencies in the state of Alabama to check out if any of these things are true? And would you, that you would have to have criminal charges brought against you?
Yes, sir, they were submitted.
Was there any criminal charges brought against you?
No, sir.
So what they found out was that actually this report did not show anything that you had done criminally.
Correct.
That's correct, okay? We want to show that. So the mayor has been saying this every month, every council meeting for the last several months. Thank you. Have a seat. Now let me bring y'all something else. Mayor Newton harassed, first of all, he made contact to a person who was off on medical leave, which is illegal. Then, because she told him about it, then he dropped her pay grade and then started taking retaliatory measures at her, fussing at her, doing discrimination, discriminated against her. She took this, she took this to court and won a large lawsuit against the City of Tarrant because of Mayor Newton's actions. This is the case right here.
Actually, she did not win a large lawsuit. The insurance company...
All this that he's coming up with against the police chief, which was founded to be unmerited and that it was, it was something, it was something that the mayor did because on a certain night, the mayor followed me and the police chief out of my car, and he came up to me and said, "F you, F you, F you." And I made a comment, "Got a quarter on chief tonight." In court, listen to this, in court.
And you also need to tell them what else you called me.
In court, in court, he testified that he, only reason he said, "I'm gonna F your wife, I'm gonna F your wife", he went on to talk to Bulger about what he's gonna do to my wife, and then I hit him. And the court, by the way, the court, by the way, said not guilty. That was fighting words, that any man that's had any reasonable guts about him at all would have hit him. So, thank you, court. Anyway.
So the next time you call me a boy, I'm gonna follow that and I'm gonna hit you.
Yeah, yeah, you ain't mad enough to stand up to me, baby.
Won't call me a boy again. Or better yet, why don't you call me [BLEEP], like you've been calling me?
Wow, here we go with the races again.
Come on.
We go again.
You wanna do it?
This is not, this is not going there. Listen, I go there. Just stop, Tommy.
You wanna go there, you wanna go there.
Tommy, please stop.
I've been sick and tired of dealing with you.
Tommy, please stop.
And your shenanigans for four years. So if that's what you wanna do, then do it.
Stop, Tommy, stop. Please, just stop. Stop, Tommy. We gotta handle the city business. Stop, Tommy. Stop. Stop, Tommy.
I'm not stopping.
But the thing is, you're not serving a purpose. Stop. It's about the city. It's not about you no more, not about me. And the court's handling. Stop, Tommy. Just be quiet. Please, please.
I'm telling the truth.
Just stop. We gotta handle the city's business, y'all. If y'all wanna play these games, I don't wanna play them.
And then, listen to me, all for the homosexual and all this having... But he says the reason he said that...
I don't wanna hear it.
The reason he said, listen to me.
Nobody wanna hear that.
The reason he said he got mad at me was because I might have insinuated that he was homosexual and he did not like homosexuals. I'm telling you what he said. It's in court. That's what he said.
But that's the past. We can't move forward because y'all keep on bringing up all this stuff. It's over with. You put the court over. You won. That's over.
This is over with the police chief. It's over with the police chief.
Listen, my house got shot up two years ago, and ain't nobody came and did a report. I get a tag number.
It's over with with the police chief. He won't drop.
Techno chief came and talked to me. The police took a report. But my house got shot up, my cops got shot up, and a little girl's still riding around here. I don't wanna get out of here.
People drop the police chief.
Y'all ain't right. And nobody's for the city. Is everybody for sale?
And next time he has his other police chief, he'll do the same thing again.
And you will do it, and I'm not backing down, because I was put here for a reason. I was put here because of that. You've been doing this, terrorizing this city for sixteen years with your old school brand of just bigotry and hatred. So I'm going to fault. So I think that the council should probably discuss the situation that you've created where you have two fire chiefs because something similar to this.
You created that. You did that. That is not on us. You did that.
You were the ones that went to the personnel board and told them to reinstate it.
No, no, no. Nope. I wasn't people at court, but I know that you're the cause of us having two fire chiefs.
Okay.
And that we're gonna have to pay our nearly half a million dollars. And the insurance is not gonna cover that. We've already received the denial.
So you guys need to, you still have two fire chiefs, so you need to make a decision. Are you going to affirm my termination? Or are you going to go and overturn this council's vote for Chief Bennett?
Evidently, he's trying to put something in here that's not on the agenda.
That's not on the agenda.
Is that legal?
Well, it's not about being legal. This is about you guys have created a, you have created a situation. You've gone to the, you've called to the personnel board and asked them to reinstate a fire chief. And I believe your exact words, Councilor Bryant, was that to send it back to the council so you guys can decide. Well, that's exactly what they did, and so you guys need to decide. We have two fire chiefs. They both show up to work. And you guys need to basically act.
Is that okay? When he gets back on the agenda, I'll respond. Is that okay?
I'm not, I'm not, I don't have to put it on the agenda. This is your doing.
No, you can do that.
Just like how you put this resolution, just like how you did Resolution 9237.
And Mr. Bryant tried to help you out when he tried to bring him back, and you called the news just like you do all the time, and you said he's trying to hire back a big fire chief, blah, blah, blah. When the only thing he was trying to do was actually make it work. He could not come back.
Oh.
So now, here we are. That's on you.
Is that why he decided, is that why he decided to go to the personnel board and beg them to reinstate him so he can come back?
I don't know why he went to the personnel board. I wasn't there, but what I was there for, I just told you.
It was also Councilor Anderson. If you actually read the order that they sent, I mean, they made reference to it.
I know exactly who all three of them were. And I know what I said, so I'm just gonna tell the truth.
You guys have created this. You guys need to deal with it. So you guys need to basically make a decision in terms of whether or not you're gonna affirm my termination of the first fire chief? Or are you going to overturn your selection of the second fire chief that you guys hired?
You're gonna find out the mayor and city council don't see eye to eye on really anything. And they have a pretty hostile relationship.
Mayor Protem, the best basketball game ever. But Mayor Protem, if he said that those documents that concerning the chief was presented to us at the council meeting, it should be in the following week's agenda stating that we did. And I checked that, and I have that. It's not in there. And if anybody wanna see it, I'll sure take it. So I can screw that.
Sure.
Hello, if you don't know me, my name's Jason Rickles. I'm the fire chief here for the city of Tarrant, and I'm not coming to try to get Patrick's job. Patrick's done a great job with his fire department since he's been here. He was a great lieutenant that worked for me, a great rookie when we hired him on. And Patrick is well beyond qualified to come back and run his fire department. We all know what the mayor did to me. We all know how he did it to me. We all know why he did it, but...
You were terminated because of the gun.
I'm talking, Mayor. I'm talking.
And her colleagues over at Lancer.
Sir, I don't get to choose the race of the people that come to my house on false allegations, false pretensions. I don't get to choose what race they were charged criminally. They were all dropped, sir. Have you ever been charged?
They were dropped because you agreed to pay $3,000 to repair his camera.
Prove that. You're making that up. You're lying. You're lying just like all the time.
I'm lying?
So, yes. So that's why the charges were dropped. The charges were dropped because they were all false.
Did you agree to pay $3,000 for his camera?
I'm sorry that I can't pick the race of people who come to my house under false pretensions and do wrong things at my house. I'm sorry. If I could have chose, I wouldn't have some children come to my house to do it. But I couldn't choose. I got into a situation. They lied. When the video camera and the video come out that we had of it, Fulton County District Attorney's Office dropped all charges against me. I have no charges.
After you agreed to pay $3,000?
I have, that is not true. And so I have no charges, so I don't know what he's talking about my termination. If that's what he's terminated for, for felony charges, run my record right now. There's not no felony charges.
No, that's the personnel board of...
I'm tired of the city of Tarrant having to pay money for his lawsuits.
That's why personnel board of...
Y'all know about my offer. I can retire in twenty-two months. Patrick's got a few more years in mind. Patrick's done a great job running this fire department. I told y'all I would sign a hold harmless agreement, and I would not sue this city for a single nickel if you just pay me my back pay, which has already been ordered by the personnel board. All right, pay my attorney's fees, and then pay me for twenty-two months. I can tell you how much it's gonna be. I make $120,000 a year. So that's $240,000 over the next two years, and it's not even two years. It's less than twenty-two months. And $240,000 is a lot less, and we'll pay all these attorneys. I'll pay that attorney. So just let me go away. Let me be done with him. Let me be done with this city. Let me not cost this city any more money on criminal lawsuits that he's got. Okay? So, I mean, I don't know what termination he's talking about. He charged me with, he fired me for a commission of a felony act. I've never committed a felony act in my life. He charged me with holding people at gunpoint in my house till police arrived. I've never held people at gunpoint in a day in my life. I've got the video to prove it. We all know he's lying. We all know he's a liar. I don't wanna cost the city any more money. I don't wanna interfere with Patrick running the fire department. I just wanna be done. That's all I'm asking. Thank y'all.
Patrick, would you like to get up and speak? Again, this was created by this council.
It was not created by the council.
As they always do.
It was not created by the council.
They're trying to undermine everything that I do, and it backfired on them because they thought that they were gonna go down and undermine it and tell the council, tell the personnel board to send them back, which they did. And so now we have this problem. Just like how they introduced this resolution trying to undo me firing two police officers, they should have introduced a resolution, a similar resolution when he was terminated. They knew that he was terminated because at that meeting, people talked about it. But the problem was, they were afraid because they didn't wanna actually have to stand up to citizens. Because if you remember, people were outraged at what he did. This made international news. This was an international news story. It went viral. And so rather than, and then rather than, than facing citizens...
Exactly.
Rather than facing citizens, they decided not to do anything.
I'll face any citizen in this city, any day.
Well, in the process of doing that, they've created this problem.
You created this problem. You terminated him. We didn't terminate him. You want us to uphold that termination so you can get off scot-free, but I don't know if they're gonna do that. This gentleman is not a criminal by the meaning of the word criminal. Mr. Bryant, what is our recourse at this point? He said he does not want to interfere with Chief Bennett running the department. What recourse do we have at this point?
Well, we need to talk about that in executive session.
In executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Citizens, this is nothing more than a money grab.
Just like the people that you hired that sue us. Just a money grab.
It's all what this is.
Just a money grab. The same thing with everybody that you hired that's suing. That's just a money grab. You've run this city in the ground.
I haven't run this city into the ground. You have done this city into the ground.
The city council has to.
You have run this city into the ground.
You have run this city.
The city council has to.
Period.
Mr. Mayor, can I speak to the resolution before the council round? I believe that resolution is about two employees with the police department who wanna return to work. I think one of them, we've already passed a resolution returning them to work. This is a second one. I think it's what the personnel board requested that we do. It will end their employment because they have not, end the issue with their employment. They have not been paid for some time. These people have families. They've been good employees. Let's just get them back to work and get them back.
Have you spoken to the personnel board? Is this what they want?
Well... I said, I would want to get some clarification based on what I've heard from them.
Oh, what issue, Mr. Rickles?
I think it may implicate, I think it may implicate some other pending issues.
And just so citizens know, Sergeant Cynthia Morrow was terminated. She was the person that was responsible for investigating the death of the two-year-old, and she dropped the ball on that. That case had to get reassigned to someone else who was able to actually get the person, the mother prosecuted. And Lashandra Jackson, she was terminated for doing conduct that was unbecoming of an employee when she gave someone access to the database that was legally, we were told by Leah, could not have access to the database.
Who was that, Mr. Mayor?
That was you.
Oh, I was not.
Yeah.
So we terminated dispatch for letting the chief of police have access to the criminal database that he assigned.
Well, no, that was after Leah sent us the email saying that you weren't supposed to have access to it.
What happened with that, Mr. Mayor? What happened with that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, at the time, it was still an ongoing investigation. If my memory serves me correctly, they said that they found something, but they weren't gonna move on it.
I disagree. I think you should check with them.
Okay.
I have questions.
Yes, sir.
The video that I asked you about concerning me, did you give approval for that to go out?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I think we should just take this, too. Mr. Barr has...
We've been waiting on this now eight months. And the issue here is whether these employees deserve to be fired or not. We've reviewed it. There's just nothing left to do.
It's either yes or no.
Yes, it's... One of the, one of the employees, you all already passed the resolution doing so.
Sergeant Morrow. My question to you, since you said you wanted some additional information?
I make the motion adjourned for about ten minutes.
Okay, all right. Let's go into that.
Oh, and just so the citizens know, we were supposed to go out and I guess have an executive session, but the council refused to talk to me, so they talked amongst themselves, so...
We never said we were having an executive session. You just said we were adjourned. The council...
The council was provided with the press release, which details my reason for terminating Jason. And so again, they chose not to do anything because they were cowards.
Was it in the minutes, ma'am? Was it in the minutes? A press release doesn't, we don't move off of a press release. But you should have done was had a resolution.
No, that's not my job. The statute says I make the, I make the decision, I terminate, and then I have to inform the council, and that's exactly what I did. I informed the council at the very next meeting. They chose not to do anything about it, but that's not in there. Madam Clerk...
You won't take accountability and responsibility for anything.
Madam Clerk, can we please have a vote?
The only thing that I'll say is that everything that Mr. Bryant said is in a news article on AL.com that you can read. It was testified to in court, so that's all I'll say about that. Chief Rickles was fired before he even had his day in court. So the procedure is that the mayor had to bring it before the council and vote on it. A press release is not that, so that's the situation that we're involved in right now.
You need to take everything that Chuck Winburne says with the grain of salt.
It's all a news article. All you have to do is read it.
I think what needs to happen, and I think that citizens...
It's on the news article. There's some of these people back here rude.
Citizens are smart, and you should know what I'm up against, and you should know what Chuck Winburne actually represents. Let me read you a Facebook post that he made from April 24th, 2015. Proud to be from Alabama, proud of my Confederate heritage, proud of my Confederate great-great-grandfather. If you think it's an embarrassment, then don't come here. They can have Cinco de Mayo and Black History Month and any of a number of black-only days and recognitions. But for us to celebrate our heritage, it's racist. I'm not sorry and I don't care. The Civil War was not about slavery. R.I.P. James Josiah Harrison Brown. So when he gets up and speak and I ignore him, that is the reason why.
Well, he's never treated me that way.
They changed the news article, the truth of the news article, and what was in the courtroom.
Okay.
But I also wanna address the issue where I almost ran over by a city council and nothing has been done about it yet. Not apologies, not anything. And she threw up a middle finger, but she said she didn't. So I'm gonna address that issue tonight. So if we don't get anything, I have been asked to go by the protocol. Nothing has been done by the police department. And I'm asking that, you know, even I've been told that I don't have a report for that. But the police was called here, and the camera shows what she did. So I'm asking that Ms. Matthews be held accountable for trying to run me over during a press conference here at the city council.
He's been claiming that I sold him, I fraudulently sold him properties for the past four years.
And if the meeting wasn't already enough off the rails, the mayor gets accused of fraud by one of the residents, and they go at it.
And he's been saying that he's gonna sue me.
I haven't said I was gonna sue you.
But he's yet to sue me, or he's yet to press charges.
But I will sue you.
So...
Who can't?
If, if, if...
Who can't?
If that's what he wants to do, then he needs to, he needs to...
Chief Mayor, can we go to police court right now?
Aye.
There is a scripture in the Bible, and it's in Isaiah 1:18. Come now and let us reason together. All I've heard tonight and every other meeting has been I, me, you. I don't care what happens or goes on in this city, you're gonna be looked at as a whole. The people of Tarrant are suffering because emotions have gotten in the way. Everybody is, the emotions in here is so high right now till it's just breathtaking. And it should not be that way. The people out here is who is important. You guys have to put your agenda on the back burner and bring back the agenda for the city, for the citizens of this town. And until we do that, we're not gonna move. It's always blame placing. Everybody wants to blame this one for that, blame that one for this. You all are a group. When you all were out running for this council, you came in groups. I remember very well, Mr. Bryant, Mayor Newton, and Ms. Freeman came to Apostle Page, a gathering that she had at her house. What happened? What happened? Where did all this hate and backbiting and name-calling? This is just too much. It's too much. When are you guys gonna put the citizens in Tarrant back on the agenda where it goes? When are you guys gonna put the citizens in Tarrant back on the agenda where it goes? Front, front and center. When you guys leave here, you go home separately. The people here, this is, this is our town. I've been here over twenty years.